Good evening, everyone. Please curb your enthusiasm, as they say. Welcome to the February 8, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman, Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Friedman, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Would you please join me in renewing our pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Charles Updike, pastor of First Baptist Church of Glendale.
Good evening, let us pray. Gracious God, we come together tonight with grateful hearts, as we gather, to do good for the city and for our people. Guide us as we meet together and as we think together, plan together, and as we look toward a day, oh Lord, when there would be greater appreciation and greater love in our city for all that you have given to us. We thank you for this day and all its blessings. Amen. Can we have your report?
The agenda for the February 8, 2011, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 3, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under presentation and appointments, at 3A is the agenda preview for a meetings of February 15, 2011.
Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the February 15, 2011, regular meeting of the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, normally held at 2:30 PM, that is being rescheduled as a special redevelopment agency meeting to be held at 9:00 AM. So that meeting will be held at 9:00 AM instead of 2:30 PM, and that is a business agenda item, Director of Community Development regarding response to the owner-participation agreement for development of property located at 123 West Colorado Street and 230 South Orange. There are no Glendale Housing Authority items for 2:30. We do have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency at 2:30 PM, and this is Directors of Public Works and Community Development, and this is regarding the Wayfinding Program for downtown Glendale. For 6:00 PM, for the Glendale City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items. General Manager of GWP regarding Grayson Power Plant, Unit Number Four, burner management system and boiler control system controls upgrade. General Manager of GWP, this is regarding Grayson Power Plant, Unit Number Four, this is regarding the wall tube replacement. Acting Director of Community Services and Parks, startup costs for the Pacific Park Pool and operational expenses for three fiscal years. And lastly, for consent items, we have Acting Director of Community Services and Parks regarding receipt of additional work incentives, planning and assistance grant funds from the Social Security Administration to provide advisement services to disabled job seekers. We do have a number of action items that evening. City Treasurer, this is the City Treasurer's quarterly investment review as of December 31, 2010. Director of Community Development, update on the North Glendale Community Plan. Director of Human Resources, this is the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale. And lastly, Director of Administrative Services, this is the mid-year financial update. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Preview.
I'm sorry, before you go to that.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry.
Here.
Councilwoman Friedman, I did mention that in the beginning that we-
I just, I want to be very sure that the public who might be interested, because it's an important issue, that the vote that we're taking next week involving the Golden Key Motel and the Caruso Americana expansion has been moved to 9:00 AM on Tuesday instead of at its usual time at 2:30. I just want to be sure that anyone who has an interest in that knows that the meeting's been moved. Just want to be sure it didn't get lost in that long list of upcoming meetings. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item.
Preview is appointment of Caroline Tufankian to the Historic Preservation Commission. This was the nomination of Mayor Najarian.
Thank you. I would like to move the appointment of Caroline Tufankian to the Historic Preservation Commission. She's a fine young lady who has been very well schooled and educated in art and art history. She has a master's in art history from Cal State Northridge. She has a certificate in interior design from UCLA, and her husband would be happy to hear, that she has a bachelor's in French.
No.
From Cal State University, Northridge.
She's in.
She's, she is, she and her family have been very involved in the Glendale community for many, many years. I think she will be a very great addition to our hard-working Historic Preservation Commission.
Well, seconded. Did the mayor have to pass the gavel to make the nomination?
No.
Thank you. All right. Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Hi.
I'm coughing.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
City Council staff comments. Weaver.
Since there were a couple of small articles in the paper criticizing the council for allowing those two signs on the hillside of Eagle Rock, the city council supposedly authorized, that is Eagle Rock, that is the city of Los Angeles, and if they choose to allow those signs on the hill, take it up with the city of LA. By the way, it was good publicity for Maya, of our local realtors, but wrong city.
Thank you. And I think we will shortly have some clarification on that by correspondence to the newspaper from our planning director. What's his department now?
Community Development.
Just put "community" on the front of everything.
And we develop an acronym or something for that?
Thinking of him as a CD.
Mr. Starber.
I just wanted to note, we did contact the city of Los Angeles, and they indicate those signs are legal by their standards.
Good, but it's not Glendale standards.
Well, there's legal, and then there's acceptable, so we'll see what we can do-
Doesn't make them pretty, it might make them legal, it doesn't make them pretty.
We'll see what happens when the full force of the City of Glendale weighs in. No promises, but. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anything, anything? Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Drayman?
No, not at this time, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
A few things. First, I was contacted last week by a member of the school board, Christine Walters, who wanted to give their, the school board's justification for the change of Keppel Elementary to a magnet school. And they have their reasons, and I invited her, or any member of the school board, to come here in front of City Council to explain the process by which that change was made and the rationale behind it. So hopefully, they will do that. Secondly, this weekend, this Saturday, I attended a wonderful event to benefit Glendale Healthy Kids, which is, of course, a nonprofit organization in Glendale that provides free or low-cost insurance to children who are underinsured in the community. It's a very important charity, and it was a great fundraiser that was held at the home of Paula and Art Divine, who are residents who pretty much are sort of the model of civic involvement in Glendale, who are always there to help the community, to help with nonprofits, to serve on boards and commissions. They're really just stellar community members. And they had a great event with about 70 people, all of the money, 100% of the funds going to Glendale Healthy Kids. And I wanted to thank them for hosting this in their home and opening their home up to this, this group, and also to thank Scarantinos and the Eagle Rock Bakery, who donated all of the food. And also to thank Camille Levy, who's the Executive Director of Glendale Healthy Kids, who organizes these events every year. It's really a great gift to community members who are vulnerable and not able to provide these services themselves. And lastly, I wanted to just report back to the community on a seminar I attended this last weekend for the Independent Cities Association, which is a group of cities that are considered to be independent by virtue of having their own police or their own fire in the Los Angeles region. I am proud to serve on the board of that organization. It's a great group, it's a group where like-minded cities that have a lot of the same issues can get together and really discuss what's happening in each city. And we had our winter seminar, which is always held in conjunction with law enforcement. So it was a mix of elected officials and city council members and police chiefs and fire chiefs from around Los Angeles. I attended several seminars. The first one was about leadership and ethics, which was a very interesting seminar, basically highlighting all of the ways that elected officials go wrong, some that are kind of surprising ways where people just get into trouble by not really being aware of the rules, but a lot where you hear what, what people did and you say, could they really have done that? The one that stuck in my mind the most was an entire city council that were convicted of taking bribes. And not only did they take bribe, take a bribe from a developer, they actually wrote out a payment plan, so they were to be paid over a series of months, which is really kind of incredible. Then we had a seminar about gang injunctions, which, you know, given that we've had gang injunctions in Glendale, was really interesting for me to hear about the processes that you have to go through to get a gang injunction, that it's not an easy thing. You have to serve all of the affected people with notice, they can show up to court and plead their case, and then all that law enforcement has to go through to enforce the injunctions. But primarily, the take-home message was how effective they've been in the Los Angeles region at reducing crime and really giving neighborhoods back to the residents and taking them out of the hands of dangerous gangs. And then we had a seminar called Leadership in Tough Times, which was about, you know, traits that make people good managers and good leaders. It was interesting, there were a lot of different points, but the two things I took home, and one is sort of more for city staff, which was that there's a practice that's changing in some, some organizations, that rather than have evaluations on managers being done by their superiors, some organizations are changing so that managers are evaluated by their subordinates. And what this speaker contended was that it's a more effective way of doing evaluations, and that you actually get more honest evaluations, and you certainly get people who really know how effective a manager it is doing the evaluations. So I thought that's something that maybe we could think about. And secondly, the thing that really stuck with me the most about that particular seminar was the idea that when you lead, there's always a tendency to want to take the path of least resistance, because when you make easy decisions or you make the popular decisions, you don't get criticized as much, and it's just easier, you don't make waves. But what this speaker contended was that great leaders are the ones that actually, when it's, when it's the right thing to do, will not take the path of least resistance, they'll make those difficult choices and those difficult decisions even when it's not popular. And he gave examples of great American presidents who maybe at the time made decisions that weren't popular with people, but given the benefit of time and hindsight, we've come to realize that they were really the right decisions. So for me, as an elected official who's often in the position of making unpopular decisions, it's just something to think about and something that I thought was maybe valuable for my colleagues and for just people in their everyday lives, that, you know, maybe, that sometimes if you, you find yourself really just automatically going to, to doing something that feels comfortable, that you have to challenge yourself to think, well, it's comfortable, but maybe being uncomfortable is really going to get me the best results. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Quintero.
If you can indulge me, one little story based on what you said. During my career, one time, management, upper management decided that all managers would go away for a two-day retreat, so they could determine what was the turmoil within the organization and how could it better be proved, and where was the responsibility. We went through two days, took tests and filled out forms, got lectures. Two days later, top management arrived on the scene. Our consultant came out and says, we've analyzed everything out, and we have discovered what the problem is. You could have heard a pin drop in the room when they said the top management was the problem. And you know what they did? The top management says, we'll have to look into that. They never did. When you said that about letting this one's under, uh, management, top management didn't care to hear that.
Quintero.
Yeah, I want to thank the Burbank City Council for a positive vote on a bond issue for the Bob Hope Airport. We are proceeding with what we call the RITSI, which is the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center. That's going to be a multi-story structure that'll house our buses. It's kind of a transportation center. It's next to the railroad tracks for, for the train service. There'll be rental cars. It's also going to have a CNG, a compressed natural gas station, with solar panels at the very top to power the structure. And the City Council voted in the affirmative, so it looks like after all the years of acrimony and all of the issues with the three cities, we're, we're heading in the right direction, respecting the Burbank neighborhoods, all of the neighborhoods that border the airport. But I want to personally thank the Burbank City Council for that positive vote.
Thank you. I have a couple items. Speaking of Camille Levy, the Executive Director of Glendale Healthy Kids, I am told that she has now moved into the great city of Glendale from deep, previously deep in the San Gabriel Valley. So we welcome Camille to Glendale. We don't need to really welcome her, but she has been here for so many years. Secondly, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Judge Howard Thalen. Judge Howard Thalen has been a longtime fixture in Glendale politics. He was initially our assemblyman many years ago, and then was appointed to the Superior Court bench in Los Angeles. It is his 90th birthday, so I wish him happy birthday. He's a little bit under the weather, and he was visited yesterday at Glendale Adventist Hospital by a cadre of former mayors, Mayor Zarian and Mayor Sheldon Baker, and hopefully he will have a speedy recovery and join us back in civic action. Thirdly, I had a nice discussion with, along with John Obagdanian and Steve Zern, with the high-speed rail people. We are not getting a station in Glendale. That seems to be off the books totally. In fact, there might not even be a station in Burbank. There are two other locations vying for one, one other stop north of the Union Station area, between, between here and Santa Clarita, rather, possibly Silmar, possibly the city of San Fernando. There's a Tuxford Street possibility. So the best we can hope for at this point is to push for a location at the Burbank Airport. And we're hoping that that's going to be a reality. I know that's fully supported by Mr. Quintero and his colleagues on the Bob Hope Airport Along with the construction of that high-speed rail will be many improvements to the crossings. There cannot be any at-grade crossings for the high-speed rail, so any sort of rail crossing would have to be separated, either an underpass or an overpass, for vehicular traffic, and they are working through the details with that. It looks like any sort of configuration would require us to move our train station back at least 50 feet, and we're, I don't, I don't mean to sound like it's a fait accompli, but I don't really see any other way for it. They need a certain amount of right-of-way, and they've got plenty of money. That's the interesting thing. Other agencies are starved for money. High-speed rail is seemingly flush with funds, so I'll keep you all posted on updates as the plans develop. Lastly, I was happy to attend, along with Councilman Weaver, the initial installation of the Board of Directors of the Korean-American Federation of North Los Angeles. This is a offshoot of the Greater Los Angeles Korean-American Federation, and they are involved in community and civic affairs, and really is an umbrella organization, bringing together many of the other Korean-American groups in the North Los Angeles area. Obviously, due to our high population of Korean-Americans, La Cremona, Montrose, Glendale area is an area of their focus. So congratulations to the new board and executive director. That's all, I have the staff. Mr. Quintero.
Let me do a follow-up critique and editorial. What is this country about? I mean, can you imagine to a foreign person what the situation that the mayor was referring to? You have an airport that has non-stop service to San Francisco, Phoenix, Denver, New York City, et cetera. So you have this regional airport served by major airlines, 4.5 million passengers. You're going to do a high-speed train service between South and Northern California? Don't locate the, the station near the airport where people could fly in and then take high-speed rail somewhere else? Absolutely not. Put it at a good distance away from, from this airport. It just, it's just beyond me how this high-speed rail, this California high-speed rail, would even consider not putting it, well, and by the way, it's the equivalent of all of the, of the rail that we currently have here in Los Angeles, and it doesn't go to LAX. I mean, it's just, it's just beyond, beyond comprehension. But anyway, the airport is only one of, of other possible locations. Amazing.
Thank you. Comments from staff? If not, let's move to the next item.
Five is consent item, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any count member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Weaver.
Mayor, I move the consent counter at five.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Next item.
Next item would be oral communications.
This is the three-minute portion of oral communications for community announcements, and I have a card from Christine Baboumian.
She works for us.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, staff and community members. My name is Christine Baboumian. I am the staff member for the Commission on the Status of Women here in the city of Glendale, and I actually come before you with two announcements today. The first is to inform you and members of the community that the Commission on the Status of Women will be having its upcoming Jewels of Glendale Awards luncheon on Thursday, May 5, at the Oakmont Country Club in Glendale. At this luncheon, the commission will honor three outstanding women of courage. These are women from the Glendale community who have, through strength, courage, and persistence, overcome hardship to become strong, positive role models for the community. The commission welcomes organizations and individuals to nominate deserving women from a wide range of fields. Nomination forms are available here today. They are also available on the city website, on the commission's homepage, and I can also send out nomination forms to anyone if they contact me in the office at 818-548-4844. The deadline to submit nominations is Friday, February 18. Now, switching gears for my second announcement, I come before you as a board member of the Character and Ethics Project here in Glendale, to tell you about one of the newest and most exciting events that the Character and Ethics Project has, which is the annual ACE Awards. This year, we'll be having our second annual ACE Awards on Wednesday, May 25, at the Alex Theater in Glendale. And the goal of the ACE Awards is to showcase athletes who have shown an outstanding balance of both character and ethics while competing in athletics. Glendale, Hoover, Crescent Valley High Schools, and also Glendale Community College will be able to nominate and award outstanding athletes from their schools, and this year we have a new, I'm sorry, this year we have a new addition, and community youth groups will also be able to honor their athletes as well. Nomination packets have gone out to the schools this week, and community youth groups will receive their package shortly. The Character and Ethics Project is joined by the city of Glendale, the Glendale Unified School District, the Downtown Brand Merchants Association, to produce this event. We encourage the schools and community youth groups to come out and help us celebrate our outstanding students for both their athletics and their character. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communication, so I will suspend it and move on to the next item.
At 7:00, under adoption of ordinance, the 7A is ordinance amending section 16.16.010 relating to the final tract and parcel map checking. This was offered on February 1, 2011, by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
I'll move 7A, but there is an amendment.
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we discovered that the code section that's noted in the ordinance in three places, one in the, in the title, and then two in section one, and then under checking fees, should be 16.32.010. There was an amendment earlier to the code which changed this section, and that wasn't picked up when this ordinance was drafted. So instead of 16.16.010, it should be 16.32.010, in the three places noted.
That's my motion.
And we can act on that forthwith.
Yes.
As a correction to a clerical.
It's clearly germane to the ordinance as originally introduced.
Motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Quintero. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item?
Under action items, a day as city manager regarding federal appropriation requests for fiscal year 2012. A1 is motion approving submission of local projects through the federal appropriation funding request cycle of fiscal year 2012.
Mr. Starber?
Yes, to John Toccoli, an assistant to the city manager. John?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. Historically, congressional representatives, including Congressman Adam Schiff, Senator Feinstein, and Senator Boxer, have solicited submission of local projects for consideration of possible funding through the federal appropriation process during the months of January and February of each year. Prior to the submission of this agenda report, the House of Representatives had adopted a moratorium on the federal earmarking process. Nonetheless, Congressman Schiff had indicated an interest in receiving an informal list of Glendale projects, which he would be submitting to the offices of Senators Feinstein and Boxer, so that he could lend his support if the opportunity presented itself at some point. Up until mid-last week, both senators had initiated their annual application filing process, seeking local projects for funding through the federal earmarking process. However, late Thursday afternoon, staff was informed that the Senate Appropriations Committee announced that it would follow the House Republican Conference and implement a moratorium on congressional earmarks for the unfinished fiscal year 2011 and upcoming fiscal year 2012 earmarking process. Shortly following this action, Senators Boxer and Feinstein announced that they would be holding off on accepting appropriation requests for fiscal year 2012 until the Senate Appropriations Committee would provide further guidance on the definition of an earmark. While all congressional earmarks have been placed on hold for the time being, the pots of funding from which the earmarks are drawn are still available. Based on information received thus far, it appears likely that, at least for the 2012 fiscal year, federal agencies will distribute the majority of the previously earmarked dollars through a competitive grant process, similar to the process which was followed in 2007. As part of the process for identifying local projects for possible submission, the Glendale City Council engaged in a public discussion in October, in October of 2010, and identified a series of project classifications which it desired to pursue. Specifically, staff was directed to solicit, to solicit projects which focused on transportation and traffic safety, waste-to-energy, veterans' housing, water reclamation, and public safety. Specifically, the seven projects that staff has proposed based on those, that direction is, number one, a pedestrian safety program; number two is a waste conversion technology project, essentially it's phase two of the waste conversion technology project we currently have ongoing with our consultant; the third is a veterans' rental assistance housing program; fourth, it's a recycled waterline project; fifth is a public safety, crime, and fire protection video project; sixth is DNA laboratory project, which was, which did receive an informal earmark during last year's cycle, but because it didn't come to fruition, we decided to put it forward again in case an opportunity presented itself in 2012. And finally, staff added the Riverwalk project. While that wasn't one that council asked to have come back, staff merely proposed it as a suggestion because it did garner quite a bit of interest and support from a number of the, from Congressman Schiff and from the senators' offices as well. Currently, the federal government is experiencing a financial deficit with the national debt at approximately $14 trillion. As a result, it's expected that if funding does become available in 2012, it's expected to be very limited and extremely competitive. Furthermore, it appears that the traditional earmark process may be replaced by a competitive grant process. Therefore, staff proposes utilizing council's approved project agenda as the basis for seeking grant funding opportunities in the upcoming year. At this time, staff seeks council's approval of the projects listed under Exhibit 1 of this agenda report, and we have Mr. Mike Miller from the Ferguson Group to answer any questions you might have, or provide any additional information on what's going on back in Washington, DC.
Okay, so the appropriation earmarks are off the table, and the next best thing is to win the funds through a competitive process, but we're not clear that the particular grant programs have been created yet for which we can compete and succeed. Is that correct?
Correct. As, at this point, I actually had an opportunity to speak to a representative from Senator Boxer's office earlier this afternoon, who actually asked us for a copy of the projects council might approve tonight, just informally, so the senator knows what, what type of projects we're still looking at. He did indicate that while there would be a competitive grant process, more, more than likely, there would be- there would be one, there might also be a discretionary grant process as well. In essence, we would continue to work with the administrative offices of the federal government, but we would actually go through our senators and congressmen and ask them to provide some level of support for these as well. It's still somewhat unclear, but I'm sure Mr. Miller can come up and fill in some of those gaps.
Mr. Miller, come on up. Discretionary grant is different from an earmark in what respect?
As we say it is. Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Mike Miller, partner with the Ferguson Group, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight and to be out of the ice storms of D.C. from the last couple of weeks. I'll enjoy the weather out here for the next couple of days. But just to sort of fill out a little bit more on the moratorium of earmarks, and then to talk a little bit more about how we are sort of forecasting the grant process to move forward, at least in the coming, actually, the current fiscal cycle, as well as probably the upcoming fiscal cycle, which would be FY 2013. As Mr. Tectalian outlined, the House moratorium was reluctantly followed by Chairman Inoue, who's the chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee. He recognized at some point that it would be a very difficult, if not futile, effort to create an appropriations bill with earmarks in it, that the House would strongly oppose, and that the president had in his State of the Union mentioned that he would veto. He said in the State of the Union very specifically that he would veto any bill that came to him that had earmarks in it. However, I would say this about earmarks and their potential life in the future. It's very interesting to note that the moratorium is really just freshly in place for FY 12 and possibly for FY 13, but already we're seeing a considerable amount of press and also discussion on Capitol Hill. There's an article in the New York Times, I believe it was yesterday. There's been several articles in some of the Hill publications about the merits of earmarking, earmarking process. So we're about, you know, a week into this moratorium, and already people or institutions or media that had strongly come out opposed to earmarks are starting to recognize that earmarks might have a valuable place and might be, in fact, quite helpful to cities like the city of Glendale. So there's going to be a process in terms of how this earmarking evolves over the next couple of years. But bringing it back to the current year, Mr. Tectalian is correct that we're not going to submit appropriations requests to the House or the Senate, and what we will be looking at are appropriations bills that are likely to pass with funding levels for all of the agency operations, and then those agencies will then find ways to administer those funds. Competitive grants is one way. It's likely to be one of the main ways, but there are, in fact, other ways that the administration can and probably will administer funds that are appropriated by Congress. For example, in the past, administrative agencies have had opportunities to award grants at their discretion that do not go through a competitive process. In the fiscal year 2007 example, there were a lot of competitive grants that were put out by the agencies, but in addition to those and discretionary grants, some of the agencies were asked by Congress to create a work plan. How will you spend this money? An example is the Corps of Engineers. They were asked to produce a list of priority projects. That list was sent to Congress, reviewed and approved. So, you know, that's where there's this sort of new and interesting layer of decision-making and opportunities for, you know, the city of Glendale to have direct communications with the administrative agencies, to see if there are ways that we can interest them in the city's projects so that they might be able to provide for them by way of discretionary grants or by including them in their annual budget request that is sent to Congress. So, you know, we're probably not going to see a situation where all federal discretionary funding is going to be distributed by way of competitive grants. There's going to be a bunch of different ways that we're going to see these funds distributed, but at this point, it's sort of a work in progress, and we need to be ready to react to that. One other interesting point, we've talked about the Transportation Authorization Bill, which is the multi-year bill that sets policy and also funding levels for the Department of Transportation and related agencies. In the past, it's been a six-year bill. The current bill is known as Safety Lou. Traditionally, that bill has included earmarks. If you take the president, at his word, it would appear that he would also veto any transportation authorization bill that was presented to him that included earmarks. In fact, Safety Lou had, I believe, over 5,000 earmarks for highway construction projects alone in it when it was passed. So, but on Capitol Hill, there is a divergence of opinion about whether an earmark for a highway construction project or a transit project that is included in this authorization bill is or is not an earmark. That's a debate that's not been closed, and we're probably going to see continued debate on that. We're also likely to see a bill this year. In fact, Congressman, in fact, Chairman Mica is going to have a listening session, I believe it's next week, in Fresno. They're really starting to gear up to get the Transportation Authorization Bill moving through Congress this year. So that's another place where we might see opportunities for funding for the city. As part of the city's federal agenda, we'll also be looking at regulatory issues. A couple have come up recently that are actually, you know, quite important to the city, including water safety and specifically a chromium VI issue that we've been working with staff on. And also, as I've reported in the past, we've been looking at radio frequency emissions issues related to public safety and local land use decision-making. One thing that we have going on right now is we're making a big effort to protect community development block grant funding. That is under fire right now, and so we'll continue to do those sorts of things. But that's sort of the situation on Capitol Hill right now. It's not business as usual with appropriations, and in order to secure funding for city projects, we're going to be looking at a number of different avenues for those that do not include the appropriations request. I should say, though, that the congressional delegation will continue to play a primary, central role in promoting and advocating projects on behalf of the city. We will continue to, you know, develop those relationships and work with the congressional delegation.
Mr. Montero.
Yeah. In terms of veteran housing, I met with a nonprofit veterans' group, and there appears to be quite a bit of money and interest from the VA specifically to address this issue. So is this a situation where we can, I assume, go directly to the VA, our housing department can go to the VA and begin to work through whatever procedures they require for grant funding, et cetera?
Right. In fact, there's actually a notice of funding availability that is open right now. I talked last week with the director of the VA Homeless Office about this opportunity. I believe that the close date is March 18th. We're working with that office to develop a little bit more information about the types of projects that the VA, you know, is looking to fund, things that have been successful in the past. So there's a current opportunity, but yes, we'll be looking to work with that office and as well as HUD on the housing for funding for those types of projects.
So our action today would be to affirm these projects and to instruct you to obtain funding in any way possible as the funding vehicles change and morph into different types of issues. Okay. There's no questions?
I just have one comment, Mr. Mayor. I'm not saying it is the policy or direction of the police department, but I heard in the past from some elements that are concerned about a bridge over the LA River could bring the gang element across the river into Glendale through the back door. I just, I hope someplace that is aired out. Well, that's true, Mr. Montero. I heard it.
I think they'd rather drive, though.
I was about to ask if they have cars.
But that is a possibility. So if you're going to put a bridge there, you better have video surveillance of who's coming over. Criminal element will find ways to get in where they're not detected. But on that, yeah, the bridge would be great, but we've just got to make sure they're going to come in near the power plant. They're up to...
Your motion.
I'll move 8A1.
Mr. Howard.
Just one minor change. We've designated in the motion the list of projects as Exhibit B. It should be Exhibit 1.
Okay, with that notation, I'll move 8A1.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Ajarian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
8B is chief of police regarding purchase of a new 911 recorder for the police communications center. At B1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a contract with DSS Corporation for the purchase of a 911 recording system and in amount not to exceed $58,499.25. B2 is resolution accepting and appropriating $61,499.25 grant from the state of California 911 Emergency Communication Office to provide funds for equipment purchases, maintenance, and training.
Mr. Starburg.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Lieutenant Lardy is anxious to give you a staff report, but I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And Lou.
No. Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
A new recording system for our 911, another...
Correct. The systems generally last five years. We're at six, and we had delayed it because of a regionalization project that's going to be delayed a couple more years, so we need to purchase it immediately.
I have a personal comment. I'll move 8B1 and 2.
Cards. Second. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Ajarian.
Yes.
Exciting.
Quick report.
8C is city attorney regarding issues raised in connection with transfer surplus revenues from the water fund to the general fund. At C1 is resolution discontinuing the water transfer. At C2 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Starburg.
Yes, the report from your city attorney, so I'll go directly to Scott Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I can dispense with the report. No, I think you actually do need a report on this one.
Good try, Mr. Howard.
The report before you tonight addresses the issue of the continued charter mandated transfer of the surplus water funds to the general fund. The report notes that the voters in Glendale twice in the 1940s approved the mandatory transfer of surplus water and electric funds. The report also then goes into some detail in setting forth the relevant provisions of Article 13D of the California Constitution, which was enacted by the voters in 1996 under what is commonly known as Proposition 218, sometimes also referred to as the follow-up to Proposition 13, to, in the minds of the drafters, to close what they perceive to be as loopholes in Proposition 13. Since 1996, the courts have had, on well over a dozen occasions, the opportunity to address and interpret the reach of Proposition 218 as applied in a number of contexts: taxes, assessments, and, in our case, that we're looking at today, fees. In the report is our analysis of the five most relevant cases, four of which are published and provide precedent. The other is a Superior Court decision, although not published, certainly has some sound reasoning. Not going to recite the facts or the decision of each case, but I can certainly do so if the council desires. But in summary, the decisions taken collectively lead to the heavy weight of authority which augurs toward a conclusion that if our water surplus fund transfer on an annualized basis is challenged, it would be subject, in our opinion, to a high risk of being found by a court to be violative of Proposition 218. By no means was this an easy determination to make. Councilwoman Friedman noted the difficulties sometimes in having to make tough assessments, tough choices. Some might argue that this is an easy decision. Proposition 218 says what it says, means what it means. One would like to believe so. One of the first points is that there is no case on direct point involving a mandated charter transfer, such as we find in Glendale. There is no case on point. The cases cited in the report, Roseville, Fresno, and Los Angeles, were all permissive charter provisions. However, that distinction stated, we believe that the weight of authority, as it continues to mount with these determinations from the courts culminating in Supreme Court decision in Big Horn and then restated in Pajaro Valley, which is the most recent case, involving the whole notion that water fees are property-based fees subject to Proposition 218. It's our view that that heavy weight of authority would take that distinction between our charter, for example, and charter language in Los Angeles, and essentially make it a distinction without a difference. Therefore, we think that our charter provision now collides with the constitutional limitation outlined in Proposition 218, particularly the provisions which prohibit extending a fee or charge, along with limiting it to the purpose for which it is charged and that you cannot exceed the funds required to provide the service. So as a result, it's our opinion that if continued under our charter, just as a straight mandatory transfer, it may be found violative of Proposition 218. That said, there's nothing in Proposition 218, in fact, the court, the case is interpreting it, do provide that a general fund can charge back to an enterprise fund, in this case, the water surplus fund that we're looking at, for costs of service programs or other things that the general fund provides to assist the enterprise fund, sometimes called the cost basis. As a result of that, we commissioned a study by Willdan Financial Services to provide a somewhat, we'll call a nexus study. And attached to your report is a technical memorandum that they have prepared in assessing the water fund, looked at our cost allocation program and attempted to assess whether or not there were other costs that were incurred by the general fund that could be charged back to the water enterprise fund, so that this burden of having to essentially eliminate a $4.2 million transfer into the general fund could be potentially alleviated. They did note that through the cost allocation program that's been developed by finance in conjunction with a number of departments, that a number of those costs are already captured. However, they did identify some costs which staff, if the council adopts a motion that's attached to the report, would be looking at identifying, assessing, and further refining. In addition, they identified a judgment in a landslide case that we had, which the court, specifically in a statement of decision, found that a broken water line was a substantial factor in that landslide, and those charges have not been fully assessed to the water fund. So they have identified some costs that may be charged back to the enterprise fund, specifically the water fund. Tonight, we have, and I'd like to introduce Bob Quaid. He's a CPA, Senior Project Manager with Willdan Financial. He's here to answer any questions you may have about the report. Bob Elliott, our Finance Director, General Manager of Water and Power, Glenn Steiger, also the Assistant General Manager of Supply, Steve Linz, and of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The report outlines essentially three options for you tonight. There's always the fourth. You could continue this matter with no action, but the three options for action are to eliminate the transfer entirely, to provide that the transfer may continue but only based on a cost of service, so-called cost basis, as outlined in the report, or we can continue the transfer consistent with the charter, face more than likely certain litigation, and defend the case and see where we go. That's essentially the report, and I'd be happy to provide any other details, discussion of the case. I should point out, the cost analysis that was performed by Willdan, there were three exhibits that were referred to in that report. They were missing in the final draft that we received. I do have them. I think I've handed them out. They're actually very straightforward. They set forth the existing cost allocation, internal cost allocation between electric and water, their cost basis for assessing a different internal cost allocation, and their basis for it. And I do have those exhibits, and each one is one page.
Mr. Howard, did Willdan identify the legal reimbursement issue that...
No, sir. I believe that was identified by an attorney who will remain anonymous. No, it was you, Mr. Mayor, who actually raised the issue, and we began to look at that, and in fact, it was a legitimate issue.
Mr. Starburg.
I was trying to get on there and give you credit, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say, as you can imagine, this issue has a tremendous impact on the general fund. $4.2 million is roughly 2.5% of our general fund. $4.2 million is roughly 2.5% of our General Fund resources. And in a time like this, when we're facing not only our own challenges, dealing with the economic downturn, and the state trying best as it can to take our resources, an additional challenge like this is not going to be an easy one to try and surmount. 2.5% on top of our General Fund budget will just make it much, much more difficult to close what is already a widening gap. On the other hand, on my side of City Hall Administration, we greatly respect the City Attorney's opinion. I wish it were different. I wish we could say we can defend this and will defend this. There's a part of me, and I know some cities, that actually are taking that position. They believe that their transfers are different enough from the case law that they have chosen to defend it. And frankly, many of them, I'm not sure, have quite the strength in our position that we do. But I think our City Attorney is right, and so for that reason, discretion is probably the better part of valor, and we need to move forward and try and find a way to deal with this problem. It does seem to me that as a result of the case law, virtually any transfer is essentially a cost allocation. We do a cost allocation now, which is the internal costs that are allocated to all the various departments, which it's good to know through Willdan's work, they've confirmed that Bob Elliott and his staff have done quite a professional and thorough job of both allocating and documenting those internal costs. And this issue of the allocation of the Water Fund's share of the costs from the 2005 storm would really go right along with those additional costs that would be allocated to the Water Fund. Mr. Howard's recommendation, which I agree with, is to essentially end the transfer, with the exception of the appropriate cost allocations that we can make and justify at the end of this fiscal year. That will give you and me and the staff time to assess various strategies on how we're going to deal with this additional burden to the General Fund, as well as the other challenges you're going to face, which you're going to exceed this issue. This will not be our single issue in the upcoming year. We'll likely be facing a gap that is several times this size.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, let me ask you a question. The current transfer runs afoul because it doesn't meet the requirements of Prop. 218, essentially.
In my opinion, there's a high risk that if challenged...
218 is requirement that any fees or imposition of costs be put before the voters and asked on a what?
Well, some fees, yes. Taxes, yes. All taxes have to go before the voters. Assessments, it's a whole different thing. What we're talking about here are fees. Some fees have to go before voters. Others are just go before the, they go out to the voters for a mail, for what they call a majority protest.
What would the percentage vote be required if this were to be put before, if the council were to put it before the voters for approval?
Here's the problem. At least as outlined by the court in both Fresno and Roseville, they both did that, and the court found that the charter amendments were ineffective because they didn't set forth a cost basis for determining what a transfer would be. It's one thing if you wanted to impose a tax, for example. We could do it as a general tax, which is 50% plus 1, or a special tax, which takes a 2/3 vote. We could do that, but that would be essentially a tax, whether it's like a UUT or something of that nature. The transfer is not a tax. A tax is a levy on a person or an entity for revenue purposes. A transfer is not considered a tax.
So a vote doesn't legitimize...
So a vote doesn't legitimize it unless you did it in a way...
It's a transfer based on cost.
Yeah. It would have to be done in a way that would essentially transmute it into a tax of some form, either against property or against individuals. Against property, you can't do an ad lorum tax under Prop. 218, so it more than likely would be like a UUT.
So if we were to go back then and look at the voting results of the passage of this charter amendment and see that it was above 2/3 of the voters of Glendale, that would not have any effect on what we have today?
No. Unfortunately, it would not.
In effect, the case law says 218 took away the right of voters in a local jurisdiction to make that decision.
Without it being cost-based.
Right. Now, if it's cost-based, you don't have to have a vote. If it's cost-based, you can assess it. But without a cost base, essentially it says you can't make the allocation.
Okay. I guess I have about five, four speakers.
Five speakers.
Five. And I think we could appropriately sum up their comments in...
One sentence.
Four words. "I told you so." But let's go through and not shortchange them from the full flavor of their comments. Mike Mohill?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian. Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale and a very concerned citizen. Like you said, sir, "I told you so." I'd like to, first of all, thank Professor Harry Zavos for his persistence, coming here, reminding the City Council, City Attorney, and our City Manager that the people can sometimes speak louder than the five councilmen and city management. I only wish we had more people from the public who are more concerned than the five people are here tonight who want to speak on the issue. With that, I'll say goodbye.
You? Harry Zavos? Followed by...
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I'm not here to say "I told you so." I only get three minutes? Is that correct?
Five.
Three.
Three minutes. This is addressing a agenda item.
Well, I can't possibly respond to this report in three minutes. In fact, I was going to confine my commentary.
Louder, louder.
Can't read. Look, this report, let me just say before I begin, this report was first promised six months ago. It was produced in six months. Looking at the report, I don't find it a professional job. It raises more questions than it answers, and particularly the cost side rather than the legal side. I wasn't going to address here any of the cost side because I just don't have time. I was going to simply address the legal issue and tie it to this resolution before you, but it is impossible to do in three minutes. You take a look at the City Attorney's presentation on the legal analysis. You can't read that in five minutes, and you expect somebody to get up here in three minutes on a complicated legal issue? And granted, I've been before this council, repeatedly studied it, provided written material, and in three minutes say what I have to say? I will just summarize then, instead of making the argument. I disagree with the complexion of the legal argument, and I've got no time to indicate why, but I do agree with the conclusion, which says that going forward, the charter-authorized transfer should be discontinued because they collide with the Constitution. And I wouldn't say maybe. I would say there's no legal basis to argue that they do not. The question of mandatory discretionary, as far as I'm concerned, is a red hearing. All those cases that are summarized in the legal analysis indicate that the issue was not mandatory discretionary, white, green, up-down provisions of the charter. The sole issue before those courts was, do the charter provisions collide with the Constitution? And if they do, they have to give way to the Constitution, not only because it's the supreme law of the state, but the existence of charter. Cities themselves depend on provisions in the Constitution. Now, even though I disagree with the qualifications, maybe it would be overruled, as again, I agree with the conclusion that the City Attorney has come to. But what I have difficulty with, frankly, is that part of the resolution that you're going to adopt that reads as follows. "Any funds transferred in the fiscal years prior to 2011, 2012 was pursuant to and consistent with the mandates, the Glendale Charter, and it's hereby acknowledged and confirmed." Well, listen, going forward, transfers would be consistent with the charter, but they're going to be discontinued because they collide with the Constitution. So the central question is not whether or not those past transfers should be confirmed because they conform with the charter. The question is, did they violate the Constitution? What is sauce for the gander is sauce for the goose, or vice versa. And if, in fact, those transfers in the future that would be consistent with the charter should be discontinued because they are unconstitutional, so those transfers prior to 2010 and 11, transferred consistent with the charter, are unconstitutional. And I would ask you to ask the City Attorney to provide you a written legal opinion why you're treating future transfers differently than past transfers, since both are done consistent with the charter.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was trying not to interrupt Mr. Zavos, but if the speakers could adjust the microphone so that they're speaking into it, it's hard to hear, and I'm not sure that it's necessarily getting out over there. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Aram Kazazian. First of all, I'd like to commend Mr. Harry Zavos for what he's done. You know, for the past 10 years, the people of Glendale has appeared in this council asking to stop the transfer because there has been a problem with it. Unfortunately, nobody has listened, and now at least somebody is listening to it, and I wish you would give Mr. Harry Zavos my time to conclude his presentation, or would have been much better off. But thank you, Mr. Harry Zavos, on behalf of the public and on behalf of all the people of Glendale. Thank you.
Roberto Molano? Roberto. That's your real name, isn't it, Roberto? Shortening it for...
Herbert James Molano.
Herbert James.
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council and city staff, since the passage of Proposition 13, cities throughout California have been trying to circumvent the intent of the law. The intent of Proposition 13 was to, in a way, allow individuals to retire and salvage their homes, because in the past, they were losing homes due to the significant increases in their valuation and their inability to be able to sustain the property taxes. Since that time, cities have continued to spend well above their income in circumventing Proposition 13. Therefore, the voters came back again and put Proposition 218 on the books, so that you would not circumvent the intent of Proposition 13 with other taxes and fees on property. Well, the city of Glendale has many times, and the city manager and others have claimed that Proposition 13 has impacted the revenues of the city, and I went back to check. It has not. In fact, it's far exceeded the rate of inflation. Every single year during the past 10 years, we've got more property taxes than the year before. It's in your books. The problem is that you are overspending. The amounts of pensions have increased by over 300% in the last 10 years. The amount of the benefits for medical have increased by over 500%. Some departments have nearly doubled their payroll in the last 10 years alone. You are overspending. It's not a problem of income, and it's not an issue with regard to the economy, not at all. So you're trying now to rationalize in one way or the other the fact that you need to move that money and transfer it because you're overspending. You have been incredibly reckless with the use of the taxpayers' money. And I mean that reckless, and I can support it with documents. This cost allocation scheme that you're coming up with now as a rationalization for making the transfers is invalid. It's fluff. I know enough about accounting, and I taught accounting, to know that in this city, you have already made in the past significant allocations of the expenses and charged them to the Glendale Water and Power. Mr. Starburg, salary to some extent is charged and allocated to them. Part of the city manager's expenses are charged to them. Many of the administrative costs for years have been, and about two years ago, you formalized it with a contract with a consultant to formalize those particular allocations, not the transfers, the allocations. This particular allocation is laughable. You are incredibly trying to figure out some way or some other means to figuring out how you can justify the transfer. The point is that eventually, it won't be justified. It won't pass muster in the court of law. It won't. Basically, what you need to do is stop the transfers, tighten the belts, control the city's expenditures on wages, benefits, and pensions. Thank you very much.
You?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Bob Getz, a resident of northwest Glendale. I don't have any formal comments this evening. I wanted to come here to first thank the City Attorney for finally doing a comprehensive assessment of this issue. In 2007, when I was here speaking on the rate increase, I raised this whole issue of the transfers, and I alluded to, at that time, a new case over in Los Angeles, and I was assured by you, Mr. City Attorney, that you would be looking into it, but that was four, almost five years ago. As you well know, I have been very interested in the impact of these transfers, not on the constitutionality. Harry Zavos has done a magnificent job on that. I am very concerned about the impact of those fund transfers on the financial problems which the GWP has been experiencing these last few years, and what impact those transfers have had on recent rate increases to the ratepayers. And I contend that those fund transfers have had a profound impact on both of those, not only the financial condition of GWP, but all of these fund or rate increases we've had over the last four years totaling about 40% for water rate increases in those four years. Now, with respect, let me just say this. What really has astonished me most is your refusal to reduce the size of the transfers rather than impose new rate increases. That charter allows you to reduce or waive those transfers, and you have chosen not to do so. That reflects on your management ability as the Board of Directors of GWP. Now, what concerns me a little bit is that even today, this mandated language in our charter keeps coming up without any reference to the qualifications of that mandate. That is not an open-ended mandate. That is a qualified mandate. You have the ability to cut or waive those transfers if you deem that necessary to keep the utilities financially sound, and you have chosen not to do that. Now, one further thing. I've heard a lot this evening about the impact on the General Fund and the difficult time that you're going to have in meeting ends meet. I would like to know what impact it has had on the ratepayers, and how are they going to recoup any lost funds? They have been funding illegal and improper transfers. What recourse do they have? I am suggesting that this council roll back a portion or all of the last water rate increase which has gone to this kind of illegal transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getz. I don't have any other cards on this item. Let's discuss. Mr. Weaver?
Let's discuss, I'll just comment. You know, our founding fathers over 100 years ago looked at this city as one whole city, providing all the services to the residents who lived here. It included electric, water, streets, everything in the city. And my belief is they looked at the city as a whole, departments all helping each other, moving money over from the electrical and from the water side to help do different factors. That's just my guess from looking back at the charters and stuff from 1906, 1910. And that was taken to be good, righteous, up until a few months ago. All of a sudden, what councils for, since 218 came in have done, have been illegal, hurting the public... the public, whatever you want to call it, causing increased pensions and salaries, all of this bad stuff that the councils in the past have done to create this. You know, I look at a city budget like a pie chart. I think you all took mathematics, you learned a pie chart. The city money is like a pie chart. Maybe you have a big slice of the pie is in one category and a smaller. We're simply going to take it from the general fund and put it back in the other. It's still within the city. So, gee, willikers, okay, we've helped water stay more flush, cannot take that money and use it for anything else? It's locked in. Great. Here comes the general fund, and these people that have spoken are so happy that the council and the next council coming along are going to be in the predicament of having to cut $4 million, plus another $11 million possibly, plus whatever the governor does in Sacramento to us. Now, you think any council is going to sit here and not wring their hands on how we're going to cut costs? We can't cut people's pensions that are already retired? That's been suggested. Oh, tell the people that retire, we're going to cut your pensions. Illegal, you can't do it. We have already cut pensions, health benefits, salaries. Oh, so, okay, we'll look at it again, squeeze some more maybe. But ultimately, where are you going to cut $15 million without hurting the very people that think it's a great thing of what we're doing today? Because all of us, every one of us is going to suffer, either with decreased services, more layoffs, whatever. And then you're going to be down here complaining that we're not serving you properly, the city council's not doing their fiscal responsibility. Sure, shoot, you're going to be down here, close a library, close it more days a week, eliminate a fire station here or there, go to rolling blackouts, go to furloughs. And boy, I can just see the crowd down here complaining. But today, a few people sitting here just applauding, we were illegal, we did a number, we got on the city council, city staff, we caught them in the dirty dog work that they were doing, and we got it all straightened out. Hallelujah! Now, just watch the downfall in the months to come. It will not be pretty. But, since legal has said, fine, it may lose in the court. I agree, why challenge it if you think it's probably going to fail? Let's go that way. Maybe someday, somebody will challenge it at the state level, and it'll get reversed. If anybody thinks taking the pie and shifting one segment around is going to help the city out, ah, come on, give me a break. It's not going to happen. You're going to hurt. Everyone in this room that lives in Glendale is going to be hurt with the decisions that the council is going to have to make before 30 June. Cost back, at a cost basis, I'll support that one. And I'll just pray we can find some way to adjust the general fund budget without too much hurt to the public. And there will be hurt, guaranteed. Thank you.
Someone like to go next?
Sure, I can follow that.
Oh, you can. You're a good operator.
Well, let me come to Mr. Getz's comments, because I have found them to be most persuasive in the last several months in particular, actually more than that, since we've been talking about, began talking about the rate increase. Mr. Getz, I can't do what you asked up here a moment ago, because I didn't vote for that particular rate increase. That was not a unanimous vote. It was a 3-2 split, actually. But don't get me wrong, I voted for the rate increase in 2007, which you mentioned. And my reason for pointing that out is that, for me, this is not a matter of rate increases bad, rate increases never, rate increases no, it's not a matter of that. But what persuaded me on this particular issue at this particular time relates to the transfers, because quite simply, the language in the charter does not say, simply shall transfer. It does use that language, but it also talks about the exception, and the exception is when the economic well-being of the utility is in jeopardy. When we debated this issue, I read, not one, not two, not three, but four quotes out of the newspaper from GWP staff and our own staff, where they were quoted as saying that the health of the utility was splendid, fantastic, wonderful, everything's in great shape, yet we want this rate increase. Yet, the reason that we were told we needed the rate increase shifted from issues of conservation all the way down to bond rating agencies downgrading our water bonds. And I stated at that time, stated it publicly in several forums, that to me, it's a backdoor tax. It's as simple as that. Now, I come back to saying that it's not that any rate increase is wrong, it's just we should be, as a council, I believe, arguing the actual argument. If it's a rate increase for a particular reason, that's what we should be debating, but not this issue of saying, if we don't have the rate increase, then we have insufficient reserves in the GWP, and therefore, our bond ratings are going to be downgraded. Yet, we made a $4 million transfer, and I asked at that meeting, why four then? Why not two? Why not one? Anyway, I never heard answers to those questions. I just want to add one last thing, and these are just comments, I didn't take any notes, so they're just kind of at random. One last thing, Mr. Mayor, with regard to Mr. Zavos's comments. The only exception I take with Mr. Zavos's comments is that it presumes that anyone on this, well, I shouldn't say anyone, it presumes that many of my colleagues, anyway, most of my colleagues, have been saying to you, no, you're wrong. In fact, I haven't heard one of them say that, except perhaps one colleague. You stopped me outside this council chamber, very politely talked to me about it, and my answer to you at that time was, I don't know, quite frankly. We have a city attorney, and as far as I know, he's looking into it. Now we have an answer. And I think it's, for me, anyway, it is definitive. And so I will be supporting the notion of, that is short of hearing something that causes me to think to the contrary, of limiting the transfers to a cost basis. Just some thoughts. Thank you.
Sure. Well, I don't really have much of a feeling about the transfer either way. I haven't for a long time. It seems to me that historically, this transfer's been kind of embedded in the way the city operates, and the city's come to depend on it. I mean, it's depended on it for how many years? Since 1944. So it's been built in with the way that the city is financed. Was that appropriate then? Is it appropriate now? Have things changed besides the law? You know, has moral argument changed? Certainly, the legal arguments changed, as there's been new, not only new case law, but certainly new regulations that we have to follow. What I think is a shame, though, is that, unless I misunderstood this, that because the transfer was in place when Proposition 13 was passed, and because one of the reasons for the transfer was to keep property taxes low in Glendale, our property taxes were set at a lower rate than the surrounding cities. If we didn't have the transfers, then we would have a higher, I don't know why people are shaking their head who actually have no knowledge of this, but what is Burbank and what is Los Angeles in terms of the percentage they get to keep on each dollar?
City of Los Angeles is 30 cents on the dollar.
And Pasadena?
I think, I'm not sure about Burbank. I probably would know Burbank. 18 cents, 18, 19 cents, yeah.
And then what is Glendale?
Glendale's 13 cents.
Glendale's 13 cents. So because we kept the property tax low, that's what the different cities were set at when Proposition 13 went through, was sort of their property tax rates. And unfortunately, we have this inequity where the cities around us get to keep more, in Los Angeles's case, a lot more, of every dollar they collect in property tax. It doesn't mean that the people here pay less, they pay the same rate, but the city gets to keep less of it, and that's a shame. I don't think that's ever going to be revisited. Certainly, cities like Los Angeles have a lot at stake at keeping more piece of the pie. So, you know, we kind of got the shaft in Glendale because of what we were doing then. So unfortunately, they couldn't see in the future. I'm sure they would have changed the way that they structured their financing then. But certainly, with this legal opinion from our city attorney, I think it is prudent to go to the cost basis. I did want to make a comment about the price of water and water rates, because, and I would like to actually invite Mr. Steiger to come up and talk to us a little bit about that. I can just tell you, from what I know about sitting on the board of the Metropolitan Water District, that transfer or no transfer, water rates are going to go up, and they're going to continue to go up, and that has nothing to do with the transfer. The price of water's going to continue to rise. As we see new regulations coming from Washington and Sacramento, the price to purify water to an ever higher standard's going to also drive the cost up. Our infrastructure is now 100 years old and aging, which means that it's, you know, time for a lot of it to be replaced. So, you know, in a lot of ways, having more revenue in the GWP fund will be good for our water infrastructure, but what I wanted Mr. Steiger to clarify is that it seems to me that regardless of this $4.4 million water transfer, that does not cover the entire amount of what was needed and the reason that the rates were increased. So my question for you is, what was the amount that the rate increase was to generate in the city of Glendale, and what percentage of that was to cover the water transfer? Because I think that if we're talking about if rates should be brought down, or if we shouldn't have done that, we need to parse that out, because it's my understanding that only a portion of that rate increase was to go towards the transfer.
Well, let me explain how we budget. We start out with the premise that the transfer is part of our expense, and over the last two years, we fixed that number. It used to be a percentage. It's, over the last two years, been a fixed amount. On the water side, it's been $4.2 million. So when we start our budgeting process each year, and for the last two years, including this coming year, we start out with the premise that $4.2 million will be transferred to the general fund. So our budget is structured around that. The case that we had last year, without revisiting all of the issues regarding our rate increase, was based on the fact that, for a number of reasons, and let's be very, very honest, I'm going to address it, we did lose about 16% of our revenue for various reasons, because usage was lower. Some of it according to the economy, some of it because people truly conserve. Bottom line was, we had roughly 15 to 16% less revenue than the year before, and yet we still had the same amount of fixed costs to run the utility, with about 15, 16% less. So the rate increase was based on that, and that is the reason. It was based on the fact that we lost revenue, our reserves correspondingly dropped, and it put us in a tough position from both an operations and maintenance standpoint to continue to operate at the same level we were operating, and in fact, we started to deteriorate that, and from a capital standpoint, since our reserves had dropped to a dangerously low level, of not being able to do the capital improvements that we had expected to do through our strategic plan that we continue to work over the next five years. So we did a number of things. The first thing we did was we stretched out our capital improvement plan farther than we originally had expected in order to cut down on the capital expenditures. We also reduced, until we had the rate increase, to a bare minimum, the operations and maintenance, which came very, very close to deteriorating the level of service that we currently provide to the residents of Glendale. So what we did is we asked for a rate increase that would get us back to the minimum levels while still recognizing that we were pushing out our capital expenditure program. The $4.2 million was budgeted from day one, it never changed. So the increase that we received, and if you recall, it was a net increase of about 3.8%, brought us back up to a point where we still, we've still pushed out capital improvements, because we still are at a minimum level of reserve. So the rate increase helped us to keep that minimum level. It did not increase us to a much higher level where we could bring back the capital improvement program to where we originally had. It did allow us to at least maintain the level of operations and maintenance that we expect here in Glendale. So that's a long explanation to say that even with all of that, we're still at a basic level. We've not brought it back to what we had originally expected two years ago, before the economy dropped on us. So we're still operating in a reduced economic position.
So I guess my question then is, if that $4 million hadn't been budgeted, let's say it's next year, and we don't have the transfer anymore, well, at least we won't be voting on another rate increase, hopefully. But let's say we didn't have that $4 million, would you still have come before us asking for a rate increase of around that same amount?
If we didn't have, not on the same amount, no.
So how much less would it have been?
Well, the rate increase overall was about $6 million, so probably, we would have reduced that by about half.
Okay. So that's the answer. I mean, I think we still would have had to have a rate increase, it would have been less of a rate increase.
Right, that's correct.
Do you have any projections about future rate increases at this point?
What we're doing right now, we've just begun a very comprehensive rate restructuring, as we discussed with the city council a couple of weeks ago.
Don't go too far in that answer, because I'm getting the beyond-the-scope hand signal from the city attorney.
Okay, okay. I'll keep it this long.
Yeah, I can redact that.
So I can't address whether or not we'll need, whether and when we'll need future increases. The only thing I can state with certainty is that we know for a fact that Metropolitan Water District, which supplies between 60 and 70% of all of our water, is continuing to raise our rates and will continue to do so in the near term.
Okay. So with that, probably more detail than anybody wanted to hear.
Sorry.
I will absolutely be supporting the option that I think my colleagues are heading towards, at least two of them so far. Just be warned, people, that we are going to be having rate increases for water in the foreseeable future. You know, hopefully, one day, we're recycling all of our water, and we don't have a problem getting water from the state water, from the Colorado River and the Sacramento Delta, but for now, there's a lot of pressures on water that are going to keep the rates going up, and most of those pressures are outside of the hands of the city of Glendale. We purchase our water on the wholesale market, and it's a fact, and it's already been announced that that price is going up around 30% in the next two years. Okay, thank you.
Secretary Quintero?
Okay, well, I voted against the increase in '07 and 2010, but I'm not going to go into it tonight, my reasons for doing so. What I have said in the past is the idea that somehow this water and power company is somehow independent of the city. Is it Southern California Edison that has to pay their stockholders and usually a hefty dividend? No, the city of Glendale, the residents and ratepayers, taxpayers of the city of Glendale, they are the owners of Glendale Water and Power. And so the idea that we shouldn't be using the monies that the utility makes to fund other parts of the general fund, to me, I just find it, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, what will we do then? I mean, will we start charging for police service, or will we charge for fire service? How do you do that? This enterprise that the city originally came up with, the people that founded the city of Glendale, they had this in mind, that they would make money from the utility company and from the water company, and in turn, that would provide services for the entire city, whether it's libraries, or police parks, whatever it is. So I just don't buy the argument that somehow this is some sacrosanct investment entity that can't be touched. Not at all. And as a matter of fact, GWP, when you think about what we've done in the years that I've been here, all of the different projects that we funded, alternative energy-funded projects, green projects, not just because the state told us to do it, but because the city council and our own managers were interested in doing something that's positive in terms of future utility costs. We've done that, we upgraded the Grayson plant, we bought part of the Burbank utility. I mean, we've done all of these things. It's a well-funded utility. We've got great managers, including the latest manager, Mr. Steiger, who's done a tremendous job, and his number two and number three people. So, you know, you have... So I, you know, you have to complain about something in life, I guess. I've always got plenty of complaints. I just complain about the California High Speed Rail's vision for the future, but it just doesn't work for me, okay? And if the voters passed this particular proposition to cut back on the ability of cities to enact, or to cut down on funding sources, then so be it. We'll have to follow the law, and we'll head in that direction. But I'm not impressed with the argument that somehow we can't, we can't touch the monies that this enterprise produces. And by the way, Mr. Howard, in terms of possible lawsuit, it would come from who?
Generally, these lawsuits are brought by the Howard Jarvis Taxation Association, using a resident of a local community.
I knew it would come from that type of organization. Yeah, well, once again, that's why we're in the kind of shape we're in in this country, where bridges are falling apart and all the rest of the issues that we have. It's that type of mentality that somehow, infrastructure, oh, it doesn't make any sense to spend money on infrastructure, just ridiculous. Anyway, I'll join what I think will be the majority.
Dave, John, Laura, Frank, it's no use. It's really no use. Dave, when you would say, "It's a city of 210,000, and only five people come to protest", you say, "It's only five people." I started to believe that for a while.
But you don't now?
But then, the people get before us, and they say, "Oh, no, we're not just five people. We represent the city. We represent all the rate payers. We represent the little children, and the seniors, the adults, and the students, and the teachers, and the doctors." And they're all protesting. They're protesting what we're doing. They're protesting the transfer of the utility, the electric utility. Today, it's the water utility, the general fund. It's no use. They don't want us to do it. Mr. Starbuck, I'd like a report detailing the ramifications of selling the utilities and disassociating the city completely from the electrical utility and the water utility. Can that be done?
You mean, can I prepare you a report, or can we disassociate ourselves?
Mr. Starbuck.
Edison will jump at the chance, believe me.
It's no use. I don't think the residents, the Getzes, and the Milanos, and Mohills, and the Kazasians, and the thousands and thousands, and the Mohills, I said Mohill twice, that they represent, don't want us to transfer. And if we're not able to transfer funds from our own electric utility, from our own water utility, cover costs on a cost basis in accordance with the current case law, we shouldn't be in this business. And you know what? We won't have to worry about IBEW, and all the problems that we have with labor, and all these other issues that we have with liabilities. Let's just get it out of the business. I think that's what the residents want, the ones that are representing the thousands and thousands. You don't want the transfer. We'll have some, oh, we'll still have water, we'll still have electricity, we're not going to be cut off, but it'll be in someone else's hands, a more learned group, whether that's Southern California Edison, or some other water district, and we could put it up for bid, and I'm sure we could sell it, and we could make arrangements to repay our bonds that we floated. It's no use. Why are we continuing to batter our heads against the wall to explain to the people that the purpose of these utilities was to assist every single person in Glendale, when we are vilified up here, not just the council, but staff, the city attorney, Mr. Steiger, his legal staff, the accountants, everyone else? Let's just get out of the business, really. I mean, this is what I'm hearing. If these people truly represent the city of Glendale, "Oh, now, and I'm getting head-shaking", no, 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 don't do that. If they really represent the people that they say they represent, and if the transfer from our own utilities to our own general fund, and we're not transferring it to, you know, Afghanistan, or to any other state, or any other city, it's for the use of the residents of Glendale, then we shouldn't have these utilities. We could make money on the sale, we'll still have water, we'll still have electricity, but you know what? We won't get punched up anymore.
I might note, you'd also get a franchise free, and you'd have a utility property tax role you'd collect funds on as well.
Let's talk about that. I think, I mean, let's take this to the logical conclusion of the arguments that every single one of the speakers are making. We shouldn't be in the utility business because we're transferring money from these utilities to the city, and it's either illegal, or it's immoral, or it's unethical, or it's unwarranted, or it's unfair. Let's just disassociate ourselves. I'm really, really serious about this. I'm sure there's a report, I'm sure you can prepare something that would explain the financial impacts. Let's really talk about that. I don't know if I'm having any support from my colleagues, they're looking at me like I flipped, but hey, this is what the people want, as represented by our five speakers, and...
As we looked at it before. Mr. Howard?
Plant idea back, I think it was post Prop 13.
Yeah, we didn't look at that, though, however.
It was discussed, but I don't think it got to the council.
Before my time. City attorney, I have to tell you, it could likely require a vote in order to disassociate yourself from the utilities, because it's embedded in our charter.
Then the people could decide.
But our charter has already been determined not to be the primary law of the land, as the state constitution trumps it. So by action of these lawsuits, it's basically put the wishes of the city, of the residents of the city of Glendale far below anything else. In fact, it has been trumped by the member of the great legislature that we have in Sacramento. So much for local control, and local destiny, and local sovereignty, but let's talk about it. I mean, this is what it's all about. This is the logical extension of these actions today, of the residents demanding that we stop the transfer to a general fund. So I don't know if anyone would support me in that, but I think we need to go there, and let's play this hand out.
I'm hoping you're being demonstrative and not...
Did our bond rating just take a nosedive?
Actually, frankly, interestingly enough, our bond rating has gone up, thanks to Mr. Steiger and his crew. Our bond ratings on GWP have actually gone up while other ratings have gone down. That's a hard, it's a hard thing to accomplish.
Let me have a show of hands from the five speakers. How many of you would object to us looking into selling our utilities? And there will be no transfers. Who's in favor of that? Who's in favor of that? Anybody? I don't see any hands, so I'm a little confused now as to...
Mr. Najarain. I just want to say...
Oral communications, take a card, oral communications in about two minutes.
Well, this item's on the agenda.
I just want to, I just want to say that, as Ms. Friedman pointed out, we meet with other members of city councils throughout Southern California. In my case, I sit on the SCAG Board, Southern California Association of Governments, so it's actually from San Bernardino to Imperial County, Ventura, et cetera. Oh, brother, those people that don't have, those elected officials that don't have their own utility, man, they are not happy campers at all. Why? Well, among other reasons, you've got Southern California Edison, or PG&E in the north. That is a utility that has to face its stockholders, that has to pay a dividend, that's competing with Con Ed in New York, and other private companies throughout the nation. So the idea that somehow we would, and I know what you're getting at, Mr. Najarain, but the idea that somehow our utility, our great little utility, is somehow deficient, is somehow unable to compete, is somehow corrupt, et cetera, et cetera, how ludicrous is that? Bring some of these other elected officials and talk to them, and they'll fill you in on how great it is to have someone other than their own, you know, their own sort of future...
And one other thing, Mr. Quintero. When power goes out because of earthquakes and stuff, we're one of the first ones up and running again. If we were under Edison or something, where do you think we'd be in the mix in terms of getting our power back up?
We'd have IBEW workers out there, up the polls, in no time, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Drayman?
I just had a question for the city manager. Our bond ratings went up, you said, just a moment ago. So is that as a result of our rate increase?
No, it's not a result of your rate increase.
Wait, no, no, wait, 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 wait. We were assured in this very chamber, our bond ratings would in fact go down if we did not make that vote.
Having sat on meetings where we've talked with rating agencies, they do look at the legislative body's willingness to establish rates at a level that will adequately fund the operation. So indirectly, yes, it does have an effect, Mr. Steiger. I've sat there and had them ask about the willingness of councils to set rates, whether water or electric, that will be adequate to set up necessary reserves, the various ratios for a utility. And I think where they see councils where there is a disinflation to approve rates, and they see that affecting the financial wherewithal of the utility, then they take that into consideration. I've had them asked directly, as I've sat in on those meetings. So it does have an impact on the way they view you.
That may be, however, that wasn't the discussion here in this chamber. Discussion here in this chamber was very specific. It was specifically that the bond rating agencies had informed our utility staff that if we did not make that vote, our bond ratings would be downgraded. Period, end of sentence.
I'd like to address that, and I will go on record as saying that, yes, Standard and Poor's clearly told us that, it's in writing, we can provide it to you, that if we did not have rate relief on the water side, that in fact, we would be in jeopardy of losing, having a downgrade on our rating, and that is an absolute fact. We would never, ever say that if it weren't true. And it is true, however, though, that we've maintained the financial stability of both utilities to the point where we've been able to, on the electric side, raise the ratings.
So the bond ratings that were upgraded were not the water utility?
No.
Thank you.
But we were not downgraded. We would have been downgraded had we not had rate relief, and that is exactly what we brought to the council.
The point is, Mr. Steiger, I mean, at least the point to me is, Mr. Steiger, that we were told in this chamber exactly what you just said, that our water bond ratings would be downgraded if we did not make that vote. We've just been told that the bond ratings went up, but now you're claiming and telling us, "Well, that's true, but not the water bond ratings." Does anybody else in this room see the incongruity in the exchange that just occurred here?
I don't.
No?
I think what Mr. Steiger said was very clear.
What Mr. Steiger said did not jibe with the city manager at all. Mr. Steiger is talking about the electric bond ratings. What the city manager is talking about are the water bond ratings. They're not talking about the same thing.
Mr. Mayor, do we want to...
And that is the point, and that is the point.
Mr. Mayor, do we want a vote on the transfer?
Do you have a motion, Mr. Weaver?
Excuse me, I'd like to finish. And what I'd like to say in conclusion on this is that I'm not hearing anybody in this -- and I'm not talking about the five speakers who are here. We all speak to a lot of people out in the community. I'm not saying that the majority of what I hear out in the community is in agreement with these speakers. In fact, what I hear out in the community is not in agreement with these speakers. However, the only point I was trying to make earlier is that if the debate is going to be about raising utility rates, then that's what the debate should be. If the debate is somehow a couch debate about using a water transfer, or a utility transfer, as a backdoor tax so that we end up backing into a rate increase, then I have a problem with that, and I think most of our residents do, irrespective of these five speakers.
Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to break up these and move 8C1 first, which is the discontinued water transfer. See where that goes?
Second.
Let's get that first.
Okay, 8C1 is the total and complete discontinuation...
Commencing with fiscal year 1112, to make it clear so that there's no misunderstanding.
I'm sorry, can I get a clarification? So the, are you going to make a separate motion about the cost recovery?
Mr. City Attorney, that's in the next round.
Well, it's actually two, and again, to make it crystal clear. The resolution provides an effective fiscal year 1112, which is essentially July 1 of this coming 2011. The transfer based on the charter will be discontinued. The resolution also has language that the transfer based on cost basis would also be permitted. The motion directs staff to go and identify, assess, and analyze the types of costs that could legally be transferred, and then come back to the council, either in a separate report or part of the budget, to identify what those are. So there's nothing in here that says, for example, the internal cost allocation is outlined in the Willdan study is being approved and adopted. It's a direction to go back, look at these things, refine them, make sure they're accurate, legal, and then come back.
So that would have to be a precursor to the, Weaver's motion would have to be a precursor to the return at a later date with staff's evaluation?
The return at a later date is the motion at...
B.
At 8C2.
We've got to get through one first, stop the transfer.
Okay, so this is to eliminate the transfer commencing with the fiscal year 2011.
That's my motion.
There was a second, I think.
A second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarain?
Yes.
I'll move 8C2, direction staff to come back on cost basis analysis. Is that correct, Mr. Howard?
That's correct. I'm sorry, if you would like, I'd be happy to read the motion to the record, so it's very clear.
I think you should.
Why not?
And it states that the council hereby directs staff to continue to identify, assess, and refine the costs which are incurred by the general fund for providing services, programs, or staffing to the water enterprise, including incorporating the cost recovery strategies outlined by Willdan Financial in the report titled Technical Memorandum, dated January 14, 2011. Staff shall provide a report to council with recommendations and options, which report may be combined with a budget presentation.
That's my motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Aaron Najarain?
Yes.
Who's in business? Thank you, Mr. Weaver, your excuse. Next item, please.
Next item would be...
Okay, and I did misspeak, Mr. Howard, when I indicated that those wishing to respond to my dissolution of the utility return to oral communications at this point, and that would not be a proper use of the oral communications portion, because it is...
Essentially correct, because it was an agenda item, and while it was related, the agenda was related to the transfer, the council, I think, needed to discuss the whole issue of the rate increase, what happened, how it got there, et cetera, to effectively determine how you're going to handle this issue of the transfer.
Okay.
That certainly can be brought up next week at oral communications.
Okay, I apologize, I was mistaken as to what I thought the subject matter could be. Mike Mohill?
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Mohill makes his way up to the podium, I'll remind him that this portion, discussion is limited items nonpart of this agenda, and every speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and manager may refer the matter, city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Good evening, Mayor Najarain again, and council members. Well, that was a nice sort of debate. Too bad we couldn't actually make it a debate, but it's only one-sided, unfortunately, the way it's set up here. But you know, on this water issue and the transfers, nobody talked about the expenses as to why they have these transfers. Okay?
Fortunately, Mr. Mohill, this was...
I know, I know, but let's talk about where this water transfer money goes to.
I don't think that's...
Oral communication, I can talk whatever I want to say, right?
No, unfortunately.
The agenda where you had an opportunity to speak.
Okay, well, I want to let the public know, this is a 2009 pensions report that a Mr. Christopher Gray, Gray Christopher, received $180,000 in pension. Mr. Russell Silverling, $156,000 in pension. Mr. William Hall, $147,000 annual pension. Mr. Donald Biggs, $147,000 in pension. Mr. Michael Hanny, $147,000 in pension. Mr. Mark Distasto, $141,000 in annual pension. Mr. James Rez, $137,000 in annual pension. Mr. William Bailey, $135,000 in annual pension. Mr. Robert France, $133,000 in pension. Mr. James Swinford, $130,000 in pension. Mr. Michael Post, $124,000... Mr. Michael Post, $124,000 in pension, and the list goes on. And I understand our previous assistant city manager is, actually, you know, Mr. Milano said it in Vanguard, he's going to get $20,000 a month for his pension. Now, I asked the city through the city clerk's office to give me the exact number of how much Mr. McFall was going to receive, and they gave me the ring around. It's in the CAFRA. Figure it out yourself, Mr. Mohill. Folks, this is why we have high utility rates. This is why they want to transfer money, that's why they want to raise our rates. You know, they don't talk about raising and lowering, excuse me, the expense side. It's only about the revenue. The biggest cost of this city is the city's salaries and pensions, and here we go again. Why? Because our elected officials have received campaign contributions. That's the big word, isn't it? Or maybe, you know, it's no big deal, campaign contribution, and then they vote nice, fat wages and pension, and we have a contract. We got a contract, folks. The union says we have, and we have to stick with it. When are we going to go back to the union and tell them, we ain't got any more money? I'm living on social security, folks. My wife is running on social security, but not a city employee, they're beyond it. And my five elected councilmen, okay? I'm a concerned citizen, that's why I'm here today. We have high utilities. We have wasteful spending. Current and future budgets, deficits, we have declining infrastructure, we have over a billion dollars in unfunded liabilities. The budget in the last 10 years has gone from 400 million to 800 million. Am I not listening very well here? Do I need to go back to school and figure out that 1 plus 1 is 2 and not 10? And the ATM machine is the GWP, spelt backwards. My name is Mike Mohill, a city watchdog.
Todd Agarib. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Todd Agarib. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I'm here to talk about the actions the city is taking towards transportation funds. There was a recent article in the Glendale News Press regarding four application projects ranging from bike paths to improved traffic signals. The Burbank section of the project will cost approximately $720,000, however, Glendale will be paying $279,000 for their portion of the project. One of the projects that have been proposed is a bicycle boulevard along Kenneth Road. I personally believe this is very beneficial to the city of Glendale in making it a safer community. The main purpose of this project is to ensure safety for bicyclists, because there are many streets in the city of Glendale that do not have bike lanes. In these situations, bicyclists are risking their lives by riding their bicycles on streets because they are constantly having to look around for oncoming vehicles. If the bicyclists ride their bicycles on sidewalk, on streets that do not have bicycle lanes, they will be interfering with pedestrians. This project will also solve problems involving unsafe drivers. There are many reckless drivers in this city who drive carelessly, not recognizing pedestrians or bicyclists. By having a bicycle boulevard, bicyclists will be able to ride straight through Kenneth Road rather than stopping at every block to check for oncoming vehicles. This will also cause drivers to be more aware of their surroundings and drive safer, because the safety of the bicyclists will be at risk. With the addition of bicycle lanes, cars will be obligated to follow the speed limit because the safety of others is in their hands. Overall, I believe the addition of bicycle lanes to Kenneth Road will make the city of Glendale much safer and cut down on traffic issues. Thank you.
What school do you go to, Mr. Garb?
Clark Magen High School.
Thank you for coming down. Nice remarks. Mr. Sipan Gazarian. You go to Clark also?
Yeah.
Nice to have you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I had the pleasure of meeting with these two young men who are quite extraordinary, and I just want you to know, I did not plan any of this bike lane stuff in his mind. Totally initiated by him on his own.
Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, my name is Sipan Gazarian. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I'm here to talk about the traffic lights that were set up at the intersection of Chevy Chase and Harvard. This is something that my family and my neighbors have wanted for a long time, and something that all of us are grateful for. Before the traffic lights were set up, making the turn from Chevy Chase into Harvard or vice versa was a pain, especially during work times. Plenty of time was lost and accidents were prone. As a child in elementary school, my mother would pick me up from John Marshall every day after school. At the intersection, we would always wait for one to two minutes before being able to make a turn, and school is just one of the many occasions where we would use the intersection. Aside from the time, it was also a difficult turn. The oncoming traffic was always so long, and when it came to the turn, you had to be fast. Once, I remember thinking to myself as a kid, how am I going to make this turn when I drive? It seemed so hard to me, and now with the traffic light setup, it's become easier. Safety, however, that was the biggest issue at this stop. I've lived on Harvard for more than 10 years. During these 10 years, I've witnessed countless accidents and potential accidents at the intersection. The worst of these accidents was back when I was in fourth grade. A classmate of mine was hit by a car at the intersection. Luckily, she survived. It had proved how dangerous the intersection is to the community. John Marshall Elementary School is only two blocks away from the intersection. There are many children that walk home from John Marshall and have to use the intersection. Glendale High is a block away, and even more Glendale High students use the intersection than John Marshall students. I wish I could have enjoyed the safety of these lights when I was a child. I would also see constant jaywalking at the intersection. Since the lights have been put up, I've only seen one instance of jaywalking. Traffic lights have overall made my neighborhood, have overall made my life easier by making my neighborhood feel safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Zavos?
Council, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I asked to speak on oral communication to address a constitutional issue of Article 13(c) of the California Constitution. And because that's the case, I want to set some ground rules to brush away some of the things that have been said about me and my position on Article 13d of the Constitution. Let me make it clear, I'm not here, either in the past or on this issue, to speak for anybody else but myself. I have never, and I do not now, say that I speak for teachers, or citizens, or anybody else. Nor am I interested in personalizing this and saying people are wrong. Anybody who's watched me before this council has known, I've never mentioned people's names. I try to stay away from personalities because I think it is important to focus on issues. If I've talked about transfers in the past, I haven't said the council's wrong. I've said the policy is wrong, that it's unconstitutional, and asked the council to examine that issue. So let me make it clear, at this point, I'm not interested in attacking personalities, I'm not interested in playing gotcha, nor am I interested in gutting the Department of Water and Power. I happen to think it's important to obey the Constitution. Now, I've heard councilmen say, it doesn't make any sense, but I guess we have to do it. Or if we do it, guess what? Things are going to be tough on Glendale Water and Power, and we're going to have all sorts of problems, and golly, maybe we should get rid of it. I've heard all those comments. I'm here not to cause you grief, I happen to think it's important to obey the supreme law of the state, the California Constitution, and that has been the thrust of everything I've said. And that's the thrust of the city attorney's position in terms of the resolution that you passed, that it violates the Constitution. I don't believe the ends justify the means. If the means violate the law, by golly, you shouldn't do it, even though it helps the general fund. And I would think people who are the legislative body of a governmental agency would be the first to say it's important to obey the Constitution, to obey the law. I assume you want to look at all these citizens out here and say, you should obey the laws of the state, of the city of Glendale. Where is your moral authority to do that when you poo-poo whether or not it's practical or it causes problems for the general fund if you don't violate the Constitution? What's that all about? I just don't understand it. You, the guardians of this city government, saying, by golly, we can ignore the state government because, and people are really causing problems by telling us we should obey the Constitution, the supreme law of the state. I just don't understand it. Now, the people of California, Proposition 26, again, like in Proposition 218, trying to plug loopholes in Proposition 13, amended Article 13(c) of the Constitution. And I bring this issue to you because I've heard that there may be a change in rate increases for electrical works, or maybe tiered rates and so forth, and so I want to raise this issue early on. So you've done all the work that you need to do. I raised the issue of water fee transfers in June, it took until February for that to be answered. And there was a line item budget in the water works for $4 million, and now that's going to be discontinued. So let me just put it up front so that it can be studied, and if there is any proposed rate increase for any rate payers of the electrical works, you'll know about this constitutional problem, and you will have done all the research necessary instead of what we've experienced here of eight months waiting to get a final answer. Proposition 26 amends Article 13(c) of the Constitution, which requires a vote of the electorate before any city raises taxes. And it defines tax so broadly that it can include a rate charge for electrical. Here's what it says. "As used in this article, tax means any levy, charge, or extraction of any kind imposed by local government, except the following." Now, there's some exemptions, for example, water isn't covered because one of the exemptions says it doesn't cover anything that's in Article 13d, and we know that the water rates are governed by 13d, and that was the very basis of the city attorney's opinion. All right, I'll come back. At oral communication, I would make a request of this council. I have many questions about that report. Why don't you set up a meeting with Mr. Steiger, the people who did the report, and the city attorney? So questions which the report raises, which are not answered, like how was there a determination made that GWP is 50% at fault and Public Works 50% at fault in that landslide case, can be asked and answered. I will keep coming back at oral communication, raising various issues of the report, but it would be very helpful if we could sit down, and instead of raising them in this form, where we're limited to certain time periods, that we can have a give and take and sit down with Mr. Steiger, the people that prepared the cost analysis, and the city attorney and raise these questions.
Have you been refused? Have you requested that meeting?
No, no, I'm not asking you, I'm asking...
Okay, well, your question since you're applying that you've asked...
Mr. Mayor, I make it clear, I'm not implying I have been refused. How can I be refused? The report just...
Thank you, Mr. Zavos.
The report just came out, so I've never made the request until the report came out today. Don't characterize me falsely.
Thank you, Mr. Zavos. Mr. Howard? If Mr. Zavos were to ask you for a meeting to discuss those issues, would you have any objection to that?
I wouldn't have any objection to discussing a number of issues. I couldn't, there's possibility I couldn't answer some of the questions.
I mean, I felt you were being unfairly attacked up here, implying that you were refusing a meeting with him.
Oh, no, I have no Mr. Zavos.
Carlo Hagopian?
Never seen it.
Followed by Herbert Milano.
Never seen it. How unfair.
Hello. Hello, Mayor, City Council. As you may be aware, there's a gun show being held several times a year across Glendale Community College, where students below age 18 are attending. Yet the advertisement for the event is being posted weeks prior to the event across from Glendale, as well as throughout Los Angeles County, indicating Glendale Gun Show. I believe we are sending the wrong message by providing our city with the Glendale show. Why do we always have to wait for tragedy before doing something about it? After 1999 Granada Hill shooting, which killed a US mail carrier, investigators learned that the shooter had bought one of his guns at the gun show in LA County Pomona. After the tragedy, they adopted a law which banned, I quote, "discussion about firearm sales on the county property." And this happened in 1999. Let me read you this article from LA Times. "In a significant seatback for National's largest gun show, Los Angeles County has adopted a law banning the sale of weapons and ammunition on its property. Our feeling is county should not be profiting from a handgun business. The county supervisors who sponsored the motion, we should not be leasing or renting our property for the sale of guns or ammunition of any kind, whereas in Glendale, we do that during, at the Glendale Civic Auditorium, which belongs to the city. State bans assault rifles owned by two men killing in a shootout with the police after a bank robbery in North Hollywood two years ago, where traced by the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms to the gun show in Pomona. Undercover agents from the California Attorney General Office were able to buy two assault weapons and five converter kits used to make them fully automatic without being subject to background check and the waiting period." Just wanted to show you a couple pictures. This is one of them. This happened in Northern Illinois University, February 14, 2008. This person killed five students. Again, this is happening across from Glendale College. This person happened in Virginia Tech University on April 16, 2007. He killed 32 people. I mean, I have a lot of pictures here, I don't want to show every single one of them, I know this is being televised, but, again, we shouldn't have this gun show at city facility across from Glendale College. That's one thing I want to bring up. This had been banned several years ago in Glendale. I'm a resident over 20 years in the city. This had been banned, but this company, which is located in San Diego, had brought it back to Glendale for the past 10, 15 years, but I'm totally against it, and we should do something about this. That's all. Thank you.
You, Herbert Milano. Last card, Gary Cornell.
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. Oftentimes, when I come here, I have to drive from San Diego. I haven't had anything to eat since around 12 o'clock, so oftentimes I have to leave early so that I can get some nourishment, because I'm usually pretty tired. So I don't stay here to listen to your comments and to be able to appreciate the observations that you give with regard to my presentations, and refer to you, Ms. Friedman. I want to clarify something that is really important for all of you to understand, and that is that oftentimes I hear the same narrative that has been used by the city staff for you. And it's a narrative that oftentimes leaves a lot of the truth out. I have attended for many, many years the budget sessions, and there are many faces here in the city that never show up, including some of the council members, you know, or the people running for office. And I think by now I understand a significant amount of what has transpired, but I go back to try to study and speak intelligently about these issues. Let me bring one issue. With regard to the city gets to keep less of the property tax, Ms. Friedman, it's probably the narrative that you have been given, and it is correct, but that is not the essential issue. The essential issue is that if you look at the overall revenue increase during these years, that's what's relevant. If I get a 4% commission on a sale on a very small amount, it may be, you know, one figure, but if I get a 2% commission on a much larger amount, I may get a bigger pay. And it's the same thing when it comes to those rates. Let me put it this way. When the city started its major increase in population, well, many houses that basically the city got only $1,000 in tax a year, or the property tax, now turns out to be $10,000 a year when a house was replaced by a mansion, or if it was replaced by an apartment building. The city of Glendale increases population by over 40% during, since the beginning of 1980. So the amount of tax has increased significantly. You know, there are many other ways of looking at property tax, so I'm going to suggest that you ask the finance department to bring you a chart of the revenues, tax revenue, since 1978 and display it. I think that would finally, once and for all, settle it whether or not we're really receiving less tax money than other cities. It's what this city is using with its funds that is important. The city also... The city also uses a utility user's tax on the Department of Water and Power. Therefore, there are other revenues that you're getting. So here's something really important. If the money that the city doesn't transfer remains with the Glendale Water and Power, your actual bond rating will go up because now you have more funds within the utility itself, or you could use that money to pay for the significant backlog, over $200 million in infrastructure backlog that was presented to you by a consultant here about three years ago. So where is the money going? I have a graph that I'd like to present to you. And this is the real reason why the city has been in significant constraint with regard to its budget. We have some long-term obligations in accrued pension trends and bonded debt. Next slide, please. This is a chart that I showed before. We have an accrued pension liability of $1.3 billion. Many people who have studied this and professionals within, Calpers themselves, say that even that figure is not truly representative of the real liability that we have. I don't have enough time to cover it, but I will do it later. Here are the annual pension contributions from the CAFER pages from 73 to 76. In the 1990s, it was about $5.5 million. In 2008, it was 22. In 2010, 24 million. It's expected to increase in future years up to $43 million, and that's on the CAFER at the end of the notes to the financial statements. All right? You need to have a report. If I'm inaccurate, have the finance department give you the projections and put it forward. Look at those numbers. You're going to be hit significantly on the pension obligations, the amounts paid to Calpers because of the changes that were made in 2001 and 2005. Now, I don't know why I have to explain myself to such an extent when all we need to do is provide you with information that is accurate and relevant, and I've been trying to do that. If you find that my information is insufficient, ask the staff to give you a graph, give you the trends, which is a lot more clear. Now, I'm asking that perhaps in the future, you might want to ask for an independent assessment of these very same figures that I bring up. Maybe some of the universities can bring individuals, because if you doubt these numbers, I'll gladly be corrected. But I think this showing a significant and very troubling trend with regard to the expenditures of the city, with regard to the issues of pay, benefits, and pensions that are really sucking the money out of the taxpayer, and we're not receiving it here in the benefits that the residents need. And by the way, I've counted more than hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxes that I paid. So in any case, anybody who wants to challenge you with regard to my right to be here, I think that speaks for itself.
Thank you, Gary Cornell.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Gary Cornell. I'm here on behalf of the Mayor's Breakfast Committee, so I hope we can have a little lighter side of what you've been hearing the last few speakers here. So we have coming up, and I just wanted to remind you, our 48th Annual Mayor's Per Breakfast is going to be at the Fendel Civic. We, we listened to you people by request, and we're back now for the third year, and there's going to be ample parking. Tickets are affordable, $20. And our featured speaker is a person that you all know, and at least heard of. Her name is Lisa Bowman. She was the first female president of the Southern California Sports Association, a very dynamic person. Some of her outstanding contributions in the theater and arts were Shenandoah with Gordman Gray, and some of the television features were The Rockford Files, Alien Nation, just a few of those here. So you're in for a dynamite breakfast. The door is open at 6:15. If you want to arrive earlier, we'll have coffee for you. And it's something you can't afford to miss. It's one event that we've had in our community for 48 years, that all of us can go in and disagree. We're under one roof, we have prayers, and we all come out being rejoiced and so happy. Rejoice is the theme topic of Lisa Bowman's speech on that, that day. So if you're interested, the tickets can be available at the Glendale Chamber, the Matros and Verdugo Chambers, or you can do it by calling this number here at 298-3078, area code 626, and we'll guarantee that you're going to have a beautiful day. I appreciate your time, Mayor. Thank you. And as I said, behalf of Doris Tweet and the co-chair, Linda Burns, I'm happy to present this to you. We're all looking forward in having you there. I extended an invitation to Mike Moehl, and I told him, "You come in, and you'll be joyous when you come out, and we can at least agree to disagree." Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Last speaker is Bob Getz.
Mr. Mayor, versus City Council, I did not expect to make a second trip to the podium this evening, but based on some of your comments, Mr. Mayor, it's clear to me that there is a failure to communicate here. And I suspect that some of that has to do with the setting that we have and the arrangements for how speakers can address you within a rather short period of time, and the, the fact that there is seldom an opportunity to answer any questions following our formal comments. Unlike what you do with staff members frequently, you call them back to the rostrum to answer questions or to clarify points, or to, or to just clarifying your own mind what we mean to say, what we're trying to say. I suspect that it's easy for you and others on the, on the dais to walk away with, with the wrong impression of what we're trying to say. Never have I stood before you and tried to imply that I represent anybody but myself. And for you to imply it differently, it's, it's a little puzzling to me. Perhaps it's because of my style of presentation, and I'll try and adjust that accordingly. In the future, as the chair, when you see a very substantive issue come before council and there are only four or five speakers, it would not be a bad idea to consider extending the comment period to five minutes from three. You have that flexibility, and on a subject like this, I think that it would be beneficial both to you and to us as speakers to get that additional time. I do appreciate that you didn't call me away from the rostrum when the bell went off precisely. You gave me probably another 30 minutes, and I do appreciate that, and want to thank you for that. Now, there was a comment by Councilman Frank Guintero about how a utility, a public utility like this, uses the, I didn't, I didn't want to say the, the dividend, so to speak, from the utility to its city and its citizens as a dividend. You know, companies all pay, many of them pay dividends. When the company or entity gets into financial trouble, you often see the dividend reduced or cut. And I think with regard to the transfers, that's what some of us have been trying to say. Our utility has been in dire economic straits for the past couple of years. Representatives have come before you talking about the financial difficulties and asking for permission to raise rates. I think that under those circumstances, the dividend has to be moderated. It has to be modified. It has to be reduced, or it has to be eliminated temporarily. When, when these dividends started to be paid by the utility back 50, 60, 70 years ago, I suspect the conditions in the utility were completely different, and those transfers were paid and there was no pain being felt by anybody. But that's not the situation today. And when rate payers, when rate payers have to incur higher rates and they associate those higher rates directly with transfers, that's where the trouble with the transfers occurs. It's not during the good times when there's plenty of money to spread around. So I do thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again today, and I hope that the mayor does not get the impression that I'm trying to speak for the entire city of Glendale when I stand before you. I'm an individual, and you know, when you hear comments like that, you begin to wonder why more people don't come to the rostrum and appear before you. When you, when you risk the chance of getting castigated for saying what's on your mind, that's when people start to decide, maybe it isn't worth it. Thank you very much.
I don't have any other cards. That will end this portion of oral communications. Any comments?
I had, I had passed a question to Mr. Howard. The implication that I understood from Mr. Zavos is that we are absolutely obligated to ob, to obey a current state law or ordinance, and I did ask him whether council has the nullification option as other councils and other municipalities do in different, in different realms and different environments, such as San Francisco creating a sanctuary city in direct disobedience of the, the federal law. And I'm not sure I got a, I did sort of put this on you at the last second, but clearly, councils have been known to challenge through their actions existing state laws, US laws, et cetera. So my question was more than-
The sanctuary city actually helped clarify, I think, the question, and that's, and that's a good example. It may have absolutely no legal effect, but they do it anyway, as essentially whether one would claim it's a show of defiance, or a statement that they're trying to make, or basically saying, "Look, this is what we really believe in, so we're going to do it anyway."
Oh, yeah. For instance, the medical marijuana issue, where their federal law indicates that it's a controlled substance, is not permitted. States, entire states and cities have come out and challenged that through ordinances that are in direct conflict with the federal law.
The US Attorney's Office has had to adjust their prosecutorial practices in those states, as well as, just recently, I believe, they sent a letter to the city of Oakland stating that they believe their ordinance was in direct violation. They may enforce that against them, but they haven't enforced it in other cities. So yes, it's, yeah, the term nullification, I look at it in terms of jury nullification.
Right. Well, I was trying to frame it.
But I, I've got it. It was helpful.
Okay. If there's no other com-
Good comment. I didn't go to law school, and sitting here tonight kind of makes me glad I didn't go to law school, but I did enjoy the small exposure to legal theory and legal argument. So thanks to all the lawyers in the room, I think there's several.
Okay. Do we have new business?
Yes.
Someone have the-
My colleague, Mr. Weaver, passed it on to me. I will pass it on to you. I move that the city attorney be and is hereby authorized to institute legal action to obtain a restraining order against a specific individual under Code of Civil Procedure Section 527.6 or 527.8 to prevent harassment as defined and/or a threat of violence and incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The name of the individual is withheld as to release same would jeopardize the city's ability to effectuate service of process.
For a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Harrow?
Yes.
Herr Najarion?
Yes. Motion to adjourn?
Second.